Okay. This is a special board meeting of the San Mateo County Harbor District Board of Harbor Commissioners for Wednesday, July 12th, 2023. Can we have a roll call, please?
President Zemke.
President.
Mr. Matush.
President.
Mr. Domarat.
President.
Mr. Chen Corrali.
President.
Because Commissioner Corrali is attending remotely, she needs to make a statement.
Yes, so let me just note for the record that I am appearing remotely under AB 2449, under the Just Clause provision because I am unable to attend due to some help that I have to give to my son. So I am here alone right now. No other individual is with me who is 18 years or older, and I am currently in Baltimore, Maryland.
A public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on any subject that is not on the agenda. Do we have any hands raised for public comment?
Yes. David Westendorf.
David?
Go ahead, David. You should be able to talk.
All right. Did you guys unmute me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
As a matter of protocol, my comments are about an agenda item. Should I withhold until later, or should I proceed?
If it's on the agenda, you can wait till later to comment.
Then I'll hold my comments until later.
Even for a special meeting?
Yes, yes, just for... Why don't you hold it till we have that specific item come up?
Great.
Okay. Are there any other hands raised?
Yes. Carlissa Ann Young. Oh, okay. Carlisle.
Yeah, it is pronounced Carlisle. And other people know me as Sid, but I wanted to ask, you didn't say Director Slater Carter was absent, and you didn't call her on the phone. Is she going to be in the meeting later?
I just walked in, Sid.
Okay, I didn't see you on the camera. Bye.
I wasn't. I'm here.
Okay, cool.
Any other hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay. That takes us along to the discussion of item number C, the first item being Catch Joanne Restaurant and Bar Lease, Recommendation to Approve and Authorize the General Manager to Execute the Amendment to the Lease and Be the Consent of Lease Agreement Assignment. The public commentants want to talk on the subject of Catch Joanne's Restaurant and Harbor Bar.
No hands raised.
Just for information for you, President Zemke, you can take public comment on item C, which covers item 1, 2, and 3 if you so desire.
It probably makes sense.
They're so similar.
They are similar, okay.
I think it would make sense.
All right. We will open it for public comment on all three items, Catch Joanne Restaurant and Harbor Bar, Catch Cafe Lease, and also the Order at the Corner.
And David Westendorf.
David.
Audio check. Can you hear me? Well, great. So this is David Westendorf. I am the proprietor of the Pelagic Restaurant Group, and I'd like to make a public comment about the following agenda item. The quote is as follows: "Pelagic Restaurant Group, a haphazard company, is stoked to announce a new partnership with the San Mateo County Harbor and Catch Joanne Restaurant Group. We are passionately working together to create a new vision for the next chapter of the iconic restaurant location in our Princeton Harbor. Pelagic is a collective prize to the PE teacher, a rookie firefighter, a farmer, a maverick surfer, a spear fisherman, a dreamer, a mixologist, a spin instructor, and a world-class chef," said David Westendorf of Pelagic's founding team. "The history of Princeton Harbor and the natural resources are woven into our hospitality vision. Honor the traditions created by Joanne's family as we blend cocktails, unfold our recipe books, and file a fresh catch of the day from Princeton's dish and food. We will respect the original footprint of the charming old building by maintaining two restaurants, a full bar, and a fresh fish market. Moreover, the counter service will broaden to take faster serves takeaway." Final processes.
We missed a couple of sentences.
David, you've been cutting out.
More details. Audio check now. Can you guys hear me okay?
Can't now.
Hello, hello, hello. Okay. "We're to complete the final processes with the San Mateo Harbor Commission, General Manager, and wonderful staff supporting this initiative. And hoping to have the counter opened by the Mavericks Festival September 29th as our clock is ticking. We will be making this available on social media on Nextdoor and to local media the previous announcement. Thank you for my time."
Okay. Thank you, David. Are there any other hands raised for comment on any of these 1, 2, or 3? Sid.
Yes, Sid.
Thank you. I know maybe you can't answer this, but if David would like to answer, I couldn't hear most of what he was saying, but I heard the September timeframe. Do you know if there's going to still be a fish market there? That's all I wanted to know. Thank you, and also hope they keep it funky.
Thank you for your comment.
If you'd just allow me to answer that question.
Oh, yes.
Sid, this is Jim Pruitt. Yes, he did mention the fact that there will be a fish market essentially in the same location as the current fish market.
Any further public comments?
No hands raised.
Okay. I'll open it to Commissioner comments on items 1. Do you want to do, take them separately or together? You want it to, together, they are very similar. Okay. I will open it up to Commissioner comments for items 1, 2, or 3.
Would you like me to make my comments first?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
"Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today's special meeting was called to consider and possibly approve the documents to execute the lease assignment approved by this board by 2/20/2023. The approval included three leases with respect to Parcel 1, currently occupied by Order at the Corner, Parcel 2, currently occupied by Catch Cafe, and Parcel 3, currently occupied by Catch Restaurant and Harbor Bar. The approval of the assignment was requested by the current tenants. Their request to the district asked for permission to sell or assign their leases to the Pelagic Restaurant Group. The approval given on June 21st, 2023 authorized the current tenant to sign their leases to the Pelagic Restaurant Group. With the approval, the board placed two requirements on the assignment. The first one is that the current lease, which is in force now, must be renegotiated within 180 days of the assignment, or the lease is simply canceled. Second, the new lease may not be more than five years from the date of assignment. Until a new lease is negotiated, the current leases are in full force and effect and are controlling documents now and after the assignment. Any new or additional terms the parties, including the district, will be negotiated in a new lease. Today before you for consideration are four documents. All documents but the assignment agreement between the parties was reviewed and approved by legal, our general counsel. The first document is the amendment to the current lease that upon assignment carries over to the Pelagic Group. It requires, among other things, that the new lease be renegotiated within 180 days, again, or the lease will be canceled. The assignment agreement between..." The second document is the assignment agreement between the parties. This document is between the parties, and the district has little influence on this object, this document. The personal guarantees, which will be required of the four main principles of Pelagic Group, is also for consideration. And fourth in the final document is the approval of the assignment as required by the lead, required prior to the assignment of each lease. The district's role is limited in this assignment process to approval of the assignment, and that approval cannot be unreasonably withheld. Again, today's staff is recommending approval of the documents, or a statement that there is no objection to the document. As the assignment has already been approved, all the, and the general manager was approved to execute the required documentation to offset the assignment, no formal vote is to approve the assignment is needed today. That is my report. Standing by for any questions you have, or any further comment from general counsel."
Okay, thank you, Jim. Now we'll open it to the others.
Something I'd like to request of the Harbor District and our legal counsel and the Pelagic Group is rather than 180 days, I'd rather see something like 90. If we go out to 180 days, that's in 2024. And I know that everybody in good faith is working towards a sooner date, but if we could cut that down just for formality, I'd sincerely appreciate it.
Commissioner Slater-Carter, you had your hand raised?
I did. Tom, I agree with you. First, I want to thank Trish, Tish?
Trish, either one.
Okay. This is a major improvement over the first document we were asked to look at. That said, I'm still not particularly happy. I see all of these are not signed, which, so we're going to approve everything, and then can things be changed after we approve them? How do I know? I also see that there is nothing attached to this that gives a clear definition.
I couldn't hear. I couldn't hear, sorry.
There's no map. I'm sorry, I'll move this closer. You're not here. There's no map for me to know what's parcel 1, 2, or 3. There is a clear distinction between each of the three leases. There is a clear statement that the most recent lease will be, that the current lease will be adopted by, for all three parcels, and I agree with Tom, it should be a 90-day lease. If we're all working well together, this should be pretty easy. I like the personal guarantee. I don't see any non, I don't see any indemnity or agreement to defend the Harbor District. Now, that's something I put in all my leases, and it's not an undue hazard, it's not an undue burden on anybody to agree that we're going, that everybody is going to be defended and indemnified. It helps keep things a lot smoother. I was very upset to see, oh, where did it go?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you'd want me to address that question, the indemnity, or if you want to go through your list and have me agenda.
I would like to go through my list because I have heard rumors that there might be a lawsuit against the Harbor District by one of the lessors, and I'd like to know about that. I'd also like for it to be, for them to agree not to pursue it. My goal when I ran for this Harbor District, having watched it for many decades, was to get some more protective leases and agreements drafted for the district. When I see, now I've forgotten where it went, and I'm totally at a loss for words right now, but there was a word in here about, well, if there's no conflicts, we'll go forward with this. Well, I know enough smart attorneys who can read any agreement and find conflicts. This is the agreement we're making. We're not looking for conflicts in the past one. We're not trying to forgive past things. So I think these are a big improvement, but I'd like to have work with Trish on this until our meeting next week. And I'd also like to be able to have a closed session where we can discuss things. Because this is a real estate deal, real estate is commonly, under the Brown Act, a closed-session item. And I believe a, I believe that we would, we could be perhaps a little more outspoken, and we could maybe reach a consensus, but right now, I think it's a good start. I think we should be working towards getting a finished product. That's it.
Oh, Trish, would you like to respond to those comments?
Yeah, just to make sure I kind of provide my assessment of what we have in front of us. So the first thing that came up was the indemnity, and I think that kind of raises the question of what is the district's role here? Where do we have privety of contract? The district is the landlord in three current leases, and under those three current leases, the district currently has the power to amend those leases with the current tenant to provide for certain terms, which is part of this package. The district also has the ability to consent to the tenant's assignment. So our role is simply to consent, and that's not a contractual arrangement, that's just the district saying, yes, we agree to the assignment, and we can put conditions on that, and as you know, those can't be unreasonable. As to indemnity, in our relationship with the current tenant, there are, our current lease has indemnity obligations. So the lease that's being assigned has an obligation of the current lessor to indemnify, and it's a very broad indemnification, to indemnify the district. And then once that lease is assigned to the new tenant, the assignee, the assignee will similarly have that same indemnification obligation, which is very broad, under the lease agreement. Another thing that was raised is a question about a lawsuit. I have no knowledge of a lawsuit. I know that there are concerns by the current tenant about their obligation to have continuous operations, but as far as I know, there's no threat of litigation that my office has been made aware of. The other thing I wanted to raise is the strict limitations in the Brown Act for holding a closed session on real estate. Yes, you can have a Brown Act closed session on real estate matters, but it's very narrowly limited to only a closed session to give direction to your real property negotiators on terms of price and payment. So this consent kind of falls outside the scope of that, where you have direction to your, you want to give direction on negotiating the new terms of a lease. That might be something that's appropriately discussed in closed session, but it's not just a broad umbrella on anything real estate-related. It's only to give direction to your real property negotiators about price and terms. Of course, price and terms of a lease are very broad, and that's why you can have a really robust discussion about a real estate transaction, but this consent doesn't really relate to either of those unless we're talking in terms of, you know, looking at a new lease in the future. So those are the notes that I have of the items, and if I missed anything, I guess I would invite somebody to highlight it and let me know, and I can make sure to respond to that question.
Virginia, did you have, you have your hand raised, Virginia?
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I have also heard that there might be some kind of litigation situation from the current tenants who are trying to assign the lease against the Harbor District, meaning so I don't know what Catherine's hearing, but anyway, these are the things I'm hearing. And so I just want to know what all of our rights would be, and I think that litigation, potential litigation, is a Brown Act exception, and I just want us to be prepared. I mean, honestly, I don't, I don't know even what, I don't know what they, there would be a suit over, but, you know, anyone can sue in this state, and I just want to know what our rights are.
Mr. Chair, you want me to respond? Yeah, so I don't, again, I don't have any knowledge of a threat of litigation, so it's hard to talk generally about what our rights are because I don't know what a potential legal action is. And then also, I wanted to just point out that, under the Brown Act, again, there's a very narrow exception for a threat of litigation. When it comes to anticipated litigation, there needs to be an actual threat of litigation. There's recent case law that says that threat of litigation needs to be specified on the agenda or otherwise mentioned. So just because we have knowledge of a, somebody thinks there might, that people are upset and might sue, unless we have actual facts that lead to us to think there's a credible threat of litigation, we're not able to have a closed session about that.
Right, I get that. So I guess my question is, is there any more due diligence that we can do, Jim, to find out exactly what is going on, and if these things that are being floated around in the community have any truth to them? I mean, I, and I don't know. I mean, you know, what, and I get it, we don't know what our rights are, but, you know, this may be one of the few ways where we can come to an agreement to have whatever threat that has been made, threats that have been made by the current lessor towards the Harbor District to, you know, kind of figure out how to get past those threats, if there are any. And I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I'm hearing these, and it's all hearsay right now, but, you know, I don't know. I just, I just want to know, I mean, this seems to be like the only leverage that we have over the current tenants, if they're going to sue us. I could be wrong. I'm actually quite disappointed, and, I mean, I know that we've been bound by these leases for the last 40 years, 35 to 40 years, but it's just very disappointing how a lot of things have played out, although I'm glad that, you know, another business has tried, they're stepping up to the plate to try to reinvigorate the harbor. But I just think that there might be some unfinished business with the current tenants that we probably should try to tie up the listings for.
I think Trish had a comment here.
Yeah, that reminded me, there was one other thing I wanted to respond to that Commissioner Slater-Carter mentioned, and that's updating our leases. So when the district negotiated a new lease with Catch Joanne and with Mavericks in 2022, we did prepare an updated, modernized lease. I think that would be, you know, kind of the form that we would start moving forward. So there is already kind of underway an attempt to modernize the lease to better protect the district. And then you raised a question about the district's leverage and, you know, it's, and potential litigation. I really wanted to point out that in this new set of documents, there is, and there is an amendment to the existing leases, and that amendment says if the parties don't negotiate a new lease in six months, the leases all terminate. So that puts the, that gives the district a lot of leverage to negotiate new provisions because in six months, there are no leases if you adopt these amendments. The parties have to come to some sort of agreement, yeah.
Right, and that's why I think Commissioner Matush wanted to shorten that to, what did you say, Tom, three months?
90 days, yes.
90 days, yeah. That, no, I understand that, that that's, actually, that's with, that's with, so that, from a sequencing standpoint, that's with the new lessor. Commissioner Slater-Carter is addressing the current lessor. Am I right, Catherine, or am I misunderstanding you?
No, you're, you are understanding me. I am, I am concerned about wanting to make sure that when we dissolve our relationship with the current lessor, there are no grudges or lawsuits hanging in the wings. That's, that's a concern of mine.
That could cost the district and taxpayers.
And so I admit I'm not an attorney, but I do think there are things that can be done to protect the district, and we should be doing it from today on. I'm not looking to try and slow down the process with the new lessor. I'm not looking to try and deny the existing lessor any monies that they are owed or negotiated, but I have observed a whole lot of stuff go on that could have been, should have been anticipated and dealt with before, while things were still in process. And as I said, I look forward to working with Jim and Trish and Virginia and getting some really good, clear documents that we can all agree to for our meeting in a week.
Mr. Pruitt, did you have any response to Virginia on the rumor?
Commissioner Chen Corrali and Commissioner Slater-Carter, the outstanding claims. The current tenant has filed an inquiry on a claim resulting from the construction project relating to dust and cleaning. We returned information on how to file that claim, and we have not received a claim form in return. However, as in my opinion, the district is protected from such claims already through our lease and contracts, through indemnity clauses in both, and the district would not be responsible to cover those cleaning contracts. And I can go into detail at a later time. But that's the only claim that I'm aware of that they have potentially out there, is a cleaning claim, not necessarily a lawsuit per se.
Trish?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, to address Commissioner Slater-Carter's concern, and now understanding better what the potential claims are, I think in this amendment document, we could just include a provision that says, you know, very clearly, you know, in addition to the required, the protections that are already in our existing lease, that the amendment document would say the parties hereby waive any and all claims, and just a very broad, we're not going to sue each other after this. This is the end of the relationship.
Exactly. It's an amicable divorce.
Yep.
Or end of relationship, or however you want to phrase it. But I need to see that in writing. I don't want promises. I'm not from Missouri, but I've been around the California legal system too long.
So I've drafted all of these documents, and including the motion. So you're approving these as a form, and then giving authority to make changes to reflect your comments and changes that the general manager deems necessary. So you can approve these documents today, and then, you know, rely on your professional staff to be able to carry out the direction that you give. For instance, I'm telling you I can add a provision to the First Amendment to the Catch Joanne lease that says we're not, there are not going to be any claims in the future.
Hang on.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Slater-Carter was making a comment. You can go next.
Thanks, sorry, I couldn't hear.
I have a fiduciary, I'm sorry, I was leaning back, it's a bad habit. I have a fiduciary responsibility to this board, to the users. I have a fiduciary responsibility to this board, to the users of this district, and the citizens of San Mateo County. Not to approve something that I don't know what it's going to be changed into. I just don't do that. It's, it's a basic, fundamental, we used to be able to do things on handshakes. That's not so much anymore. I need to know the actual language. It's not that I don't trust staff. I, I think major improvements have been made. But it's just my responsibility and I don't shirk it. Next, next week, we have a meeting.
Commissioner Chen Corrali.
Quick question. Commissioner Matush brought up the issue of change, reducing the time from six months to three months? Hundred and eighty days to ninety days? I mean, and also, Trish, you just mentioned that we would be approving something that would be out a hundred and eighty days or six months. I mean, if, can we, well, not can we? If the board wants to change that to three months, how can that be changed right now? Or can it be changed right now? Or is that something we should change and bring it back next week?
To approve the amendment.
Yeah, we would just, again, it would be something where, similar to what I was mentioning before. And I wouldn't, I would never want, I'm suggesting that you could give us clear direction and we could provide, we could provide you a contract that has that clear direction. And yes, we could reduce it to three months. I guess the one, so the six months, as I said, this is a really strong provision with leverage. Because the contract, the lease will expire in six months. So the parties can negotiate, yeah.
Well, I mean, quite frankly, the lease, in my opinion, has, was breached. And there were defaults that were not, that did not come to fruition correctly. And so I'm just trying to tag on to what Commissioner Matush is saying because I understand his concern. And so I want to know how we can change this from six months to three months? If we're going to vote on this today? And that the provision today that we're voting on would be three months from six months?
And I just, I'm clarifying that I absolutely could make that change very easily in this amendment, instead of a hundred and eighty days, we'd say.
Today.
If that's in the motion, you could say that you want it ninety days.
I'm just trying to understand this better. I don't, I mean, I don't know if Commissioner Matush has anything else to say. But anyway, I just am trying to gather information, that's all. But thank you for that clarification.
And I guess I just wanted to, just to highlight, because I think it's important that if you do change it to three months, again, it's saying that the leases expire. So that is kind of, that's, seems like a relatively short amount of time to negotiate and then get it on a board agenda. I just want to kind of raise that, that the six, the hundred and six, the hundred and eighty days, yeah, okay.
That's not the issue. This goes back to something that I really don't want to even bring up right now. It's already done. We're, we're in this position, in my mind, there was already a default that should have been, that should have terminated leases earlier. But again, that's up for interpretation and did not happen. And so the, actually, I don't want to go on anymore because that's all I have to say. I just want to understand. I understand where you're coming from, but what I'm saying is these leases should have been terminated way before now. Thank you, Bill.
Commissioner Matush.
I think the board has extreme concern with the overlapping leases. And that's the primary thing that we want addressed. We don't want somebody coming back and saying, no, I just bought this, it has a 2031 type thing. So that's why I'm requesting the ninety days on the contract. Counsel did mention the indemnification on assuming. And now that I understand that better, I'm fine with that. We're protected against that or anything that might happen. So I'm going to vote in favor to approve this, as counsel has mentioned, that they have the ability to modify per board direction. So I think that what we want is just board direction on a couple of statements. And if counsel and general manager sees fit, I think that we can wrap this up.
Commissioner Dumrot, do you have anything to add, that you'd like to add?
I rely on, on the expertise of the board. Have a lot more expertise in leases and how to rake these up to keep us going straight and forward. So ninety days, I guess, is that doable by the parties that we're dealing with? I guess that would be a question I would have. I mean, would they agree that they can do something in ninety days? Maybe they can, you know, others may know better. Is there something that we can do that if, put in ninety to a hundred and eighty? And if they hit ninety, there's some kind of benefit that we provide to get it done earlier than later?
No.
I know, balance between two things. If we can't do that, then that's fine.
What's?
The realism of the ninety days is, I guess, my question. Maybe to legal, if they can, or to Jim.
And just understanding the process, I guess, as we negotiate the lease or designate these, negotiate the lease and then bring it back to us, that needs to be discussed and approved in an open session. So I can see where there might be some concern that if you fall at a certain time, you may not be able to make a regular, a regular board meeting. So is there a way of saying our intent is to negotiate within ninety days and have it approved within a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty days? Or is that?
So, Bill?
Yes, Virginia.
Sorry, for me, the ninety day thing is to pretty much get the leases tied. I mean, I would like to go with thirty days, right? Just to get the leases terminated. Yeah, I don't know, Tom, is that what you're talking about? Is that why you want to shorten the days, number of days by fifty percent?
The concern, as I expressed earlier, is the overlapping leases.
I agree.
Just definitely worried that we want to make sure that somebody doesn't come out of the woodwork and say, oh, look, here's what this piece of paper had that I signed.
Yeah, so, so my question is, for ninety days, for night, three months? I mean, why not just do it in less than a month? I mean, I think that sooner these leases are term, I agree with you. The sooner these leases are terminated, the better. These leases, in my mind, should have been terminated as of May, at the end of May. And for whatever reason, it didn't happen. And that's okay, we are where we are. And I, and I did not, we're going to move on. But the point is, is if the, if the goal, I guess we have to define the goal. What is the goal? Is the goal to terminate these leases so that the overlapping leases won't harm the Harbor District? Because if that's the goal, then a shorter timeframe than ninety days should happen. And it's not ninety days. I mean, if we want to terminate these, I'm all for terminating the leases as soon as possible. For me, thinking back on this and based on your rationale, Tom, ninety days is too long for me even. I mean, these leases should have been terminated by the end of May for breach of contract or breach of lease by the current tenants. So I mean, I would go for thirty days or even two, even tomorrow because I want the leases to be terminated so we can negotiate new leases from scratch.
Trish, I just wanted to clarify that what is happening is the lease document is being assigned to the new tenant. So we're not, if, you can't terminate that because then there'd be nothing to assign to this new tenant.
That's correct.
So there's not going to be overlapping leases. There's one lease that's being assigned to the new tenant. And when the new, the new tenants, and when the new, three leases that are assigned to the new tenants, when those tenants receive these new leases, the way that I've written this amendment, they are going to receive them with a, with a termination date. So they're getting a lease that effectively is only six months long.
No, I know, I know that, Trisha, I understand that. That is not the issue. The issue is what I agree with Tom on. There, it may not appear to be overlapping leases, but that's in effect and de facto what it is. Okay, that, that's, no matter what the agreements are, I mean, they are going, the new tenants are going to be assigned the current leases. And what it sounds like, what Tom is proposing, if I'm hearing you right, Tom, is that you want that day, the number of days of overlap to be as minimum, as minimal as possible. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct, but as President Zimki also brought up, working within the system and the meeting dates and deadlines.
I know, why can't we do this in thirty days?
Striving for ninety, and as Commissioner Dormarat said, strive for ninety. And if it goes beyond that, but it just.
No, but what our attorney was asking for is a time certain, a date. And so it seems like right now we are trying to determine the date. You're saying ninety days, and I'm saying, why not sooner, thirty?
I think one of the questions is, and, and it, it's about how long it's going to take to develop this property. Certainly, it can't happen in thirty days, it won't even happen in ninety. And the new lessor needs to get started yesterday.
Right, so why not thirty days? And I don't know, I'm just throwing a number out there.
There are also opportunities for interim documents. It's not all or nothing. And I'm surprised that our attorney isn't helping us solve this problem. Because we're talking about how to solve the problem that recognizes the protections for the district and the constraints that the new lessors are working under. And I don't see that addressed in these documents. And so, again, that's, that's part of my concern about these documents is, is I'd like to see something that could address the financial insecurities, for instance, that the new lessors have. They have to go to banks. They have to be able to show leases. They have to be able to get financing, they have to show securities. And that they've got something they can take a loan on, if they need a loan. And, and it doesn't really matter whether it's private funding or, or business funding. There's a lot of things that they need to deal with. So I'd like to see something that we can agree to that meets the, meets the protection needs of the district, but also meets the needs of the new lessors. And I haven't put a whole lot of thought or research into this, but I know there's a whole lot of different kinds of leases. We can certainly do leases that have contingency dates in them. We could give them a five-year lease and put all kinds of contingencies in it that, that would break the lease, but it would allow them to get what they need to be able to go forward with this. I'm, I'm looking forward to improving this totally underutilized prime piece of real estate. And, and we do have some, some very strong interest. And so I'd like to find a way to accommodate those needs. But I don't think we're going to do it at an open board meeting today.
Well, I don't, I guess maybe my response to that, what we're really trying to accomplish today is the documents that, on the consign, on the assignment. I mean, we're not trying to negotiate the new lease today. And I think that, from what I understand, we're kind of on the critical path for Pelagic. And they need to have that assurance that they've gotten the assignment. So that's what we're trying to accomplish today.
Well, with all due respect, the assignment really is, it, it's not even us with Pelagic. It's really, we just have to consent and say, yes, we agree with the lessor, the current tenant, that you're okay assigning these leases. It doesn't matter if it's to Pelagic or someone else. And, and you know, Catherine, I understand what, you know, President Zimki's saying. My number one priority is to make sure the Harbor District is protected. And unfortunately, we're not in the best negotiating point just because of the nature of the leases. You know, right now, as everyone knows, I've been, I have a heartache of giving one party all three, or sixty percent of that building, all three areas for a restaurant, right? But, you know, they've also come up with, you know, a decent business plan that I think could work. But, you know, that's just, it's not to say that there couldn't be other ones out there. But this is the hand that we've been dealt right now, including, you know, not having the leases terminated because of the default, in my opinion, okay? And so right now, we're looking at the assignment, which is a very, is very clear. This is the only thing that we're looking at. What is the best way for the Harbor District to have these leases terminated as quickly as possible for the Harbor District benefit, right? So that we can start at ground zero, square one with new leases? Since, for whatever reason, the termination letters did not go out to the current tenants. So that, that's, I think, really the time, that I'm, the time element of how soon we can terminate these leases is what I'm focused on right now.
Well, I, my sense is that Pelagic or the new leases are motivated to get that done as quickly as possible. So I have no problem with the ninety days. Thirty days, I think, is really kind of pushing it, but ninety would be reasonable. Commissioner.
Well, thirty days, thirty days, actually, I think helps the district more than ninety days. What, I mean, what's the difference? If y'all are thinking that ninety days is going to help Pelagic, that's, that's really not my concern. My concern is how do we terminate the leases so that the Harbor District can start anew with new, with different, with nothing? Start from the very beginning.
I'm not focusing on the termination, I'm just focusing on the logistics it's going to be to actually negotiate those new leases. Just the back and forth.
Yeah, but if there's no, if, but, what's the difference? The outcome would be the same. If the leases are terminated, we'd have to negotiate anyway, whether it's ninety or thirty. The outcome is the same. One just gets you there quicker. In terms of the number of days. Just my.
Is it logistically possible to?
I don't, I don't know, but is that really our concern? It's logistically possible, look, we, Jim got all of this done pretty quickly. So what's the difference? I mean, logistically possible for whom, I guess, is my question. Who are y'all concerned about? Pelagic or the Harbor District?
I'm concerned about our ability to do it.
I don't know, Jim, can we do this in thirty days?
Oh, Jim, I, do you want to?
Renegotiate a brand-new lease from scratch within thirty days would be very difficult, given the board's meeting schedule and everybody else's schedule. And on the part of the new leases, when this assignment takes place. So we provided, we recommended a hundred and eighty days. So we have plenty of time to work back and forth to get a lease that works for the district. But if directed by the board to do ninety days, I believe we can do it in ninety days. It'll be, that'll be rushed based on our meeting schedule.
Commissioner Dumrot.
This may be a question for legal, and will show more of my lack of understanding of leases. But is it possible, with the consent of the board, that upon acceptance, where, you know, upon acceptance of the lease assignment, we can write in there that Pelagic, or the new people who are receiving those leases, will then, within thirty days, sit down and start to negotiate a new lease with the district? So that, that then, and they make like a promissory note, or can we hold them to that kind of promissory note? That said, okay, once you accept this, then within thirty days, let's start working on the new lease. At that point, then thirty days, all those leases go away and we start working. It's not to say we're going to finish it in thirty days. It's to say, we'll start within thirty days, we work it within sixty or ninety, whatever it takes. The sooner we get it done, the better we are, because then they can get into their business and everybody, you know, can go forward. Is that, I mean, something that can be done?
Yeah, the, I'm glad you asked the question because the question came up about, and I think Commissioner Chen Corrali said something about whether or not it was Pelagic. The way I've drafted the amendment, which was intended to protect the district, because we do have, we are a party to an agreement with the current tenants. we do have, we are a party to an agreement with the current tenant, so we can get that current tenant to negotiate with us on terms that help us set up a pathway to success for the new lease. We're doing that by saying that the leases will expire in a certain amount of time. But I've also provided that none of this is effective unless the assignment is made to Pelagic. So it's only, the consent is contingent only on Pelagic being the party to whom the, the lease is assigned, and it's contingent only on the current tenant entering into this amendment. And yes, we could write into the amendment that it's going to terminate in 180 or 90 days, and also that the tenant agrees to sit down with the district, you know, we could say, begin negotiations in good faith by a date certain. Of course, we all know that those kind of provisions are difficult to enforce, but it is a clear way to establish a term of contract that says, yes, we've given you 180 days, but the expectation is this starts right away.
And that's their expectation, too.
My question, Matush.
No, I think that we've been worrying about this, and it's been staring at us right in the face the whole time. The way we wrote this up is this, number one, that upon execution of the assignment, Pelagic Restaurant Group must negotiate a new lease superseding and canceling the current lease within 180 days. And I think that says it all about the lease. And now I start thinking hard about this 90 days, because the assignees are going to be very busy with construction projects, permitting, design issues, and a lot of things. So I think that 90 would be, although I'd like 90, we can strive for 90, I would understand that somebody that's building a business from the ground up is going to be very challenged to come in and make a lot of extra decisions and contract negotiations. So I think that sentence one, number one, gives us all we need, and I think that's enough to let us proceed.
With the suggested amendments, not without. All the ones we've been talking about.
Do we have any hands raised from the, oh yeah, David Westendorf has his hand raised. Maybe he can.
Maybe we can just take a break and, and take public comment.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
David Westendorf.
All right, I'm happy to provide a little leisure time for everybody in your two-minute break. So I'm speaking on behalf of Pelagic Group, and we see no issues whatsoever with a 90-day drive to a negotiation. The only thing I like to focus people's attention to is the fact that we have ostensibly already burned about three weeks of whatever said time, and we just want to make sure that if we were to do 30 days, that we've already burned through about three of those, three of those weeks. But we have no issues whatsoever with 90 days, and, and want to get into this negotiation as fast as possible. And all the comments from Commissioners Matush, Corrali absolutely agree. We want to get moving on this ASAP.
Thank you for the comment.
I have Sid Young.
Okay, let's open up for another comment.
Thank you. I would just like to say that the public is anxious to see some restaurants back in business down there, so maybe you could make it 45 days. I'm not a lawyer, but it sounds like everybody's motivated. So definitely the public is motivated, and everybody's looking forward to something, some food down there and a, a nice new restaurant, if that's what's planned. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, any other public comments out there?
No more public comment.
Well, getting back to this, is, is it's, seems to be within Pelagic's interest to do, to entertain the 90-day process. Is that acceptable to our staff? Do you think that that's doable?
If directed, we'll do that.
Okay.
The other two, just for clarification, the two, two other issues were, one was the 90 days. The other one was the indemnification clause that General Counsel referred to.
Right.
And, and no further lawsuits. When this deal is done, it's done.
That with the indemnification, but.
No, that's different.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to make that very clear, because I think this whole thing has been, for decades, this whole situation has been fraught with, with not enough clarity around anything. So what Catherine is saying, I just want to make sure staff understands the direction. Catherine, you want to repeat what you, what you were saying about how it's different from indemnification?
I think, I think Jim got it. Trish did say that the indemnification, but not the defense, is in the lease that everything is being consolidated into. And so that's, that's good, and I, and I'd like to make sure that that's a strong statement, not just an assumption. I also want, and you've said we can do it, is to say, at the end, when these documents are all signed, there will be no, everybody's agreeing, no lawsuits. We're not going after the existing lessee because they couldn't meet their operating conditions under the lease. They're not going after us for cleaning or whatever other things some ambulance-chasing attorney comes up with. And the other is the time limit.
Bill, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Commissioner Chang Corrali.
Thank you. Jim, a member of the public mentioned 45 days. What do you think the soonest would be for, for you to get something done? I mean, I'm looking at the time, the time, the time element here will accomplish a lot of different things. So I just, what, what is the minimum time? And don't say 90 days, because we, we, this whole thing, this whole process has been fast-tracked by you. So I don't understand why it can't be fast-tracked more so that it actually benefits the Harbor District.
The minimum, based on our meeting schedule, would be 60.
We can schedule special meetings, like we've done today.
We could, but based on.
Why wouldn't we do that?
Our, once the assignment is completed, it's my intention, it's also the intention of Pelagic, to meet as soon as possible, to start working together on coming up with lease that both parties can sign. We're going to do it as quick as possible. But then, once that's done, working with Legal has to review it, and then the board will have to review it. So we can call special meetings if that, if the board wants, but I can tell you, I will be working at best speed to, it's so with Pelagic, that, that they've already made that statement, to execute new leases, because they want the new leases as much as we do, if not more.
Trish.
I was just going to add that it sounds like the board is going to want to have a lot of input on the terms of the new lease. And if that's the case, you're going to want to have closed sessions to give direction to your real property negotiators, who are then going to have to go out and talk with the proposed tenant. So you're going to want to have time. You know, it's possible that the first closed session, you're not in agreement with everything. You may want to build in some time to have a special meeting, to have your negotiators go out there and talk with the, with the new tenant, come back, talk with the board in closed session again. There may be some back and forth before you put it on an agenda. So I just kind of wanted to highlight, so you're thinking about that as you're setting out the timeline.
Well, if staff thinks that 60 days is good, why wouldn't we just move it up to 60?
Well, I guess my comment to that is I'm trying to factor in the commission and kind of the, the mechanics of how we work with things, and it always seems to take longer than, than you think it should. And I, I'm, I'm really leaning more towards 90 than 60.
Okay.
Which doesn't mean we can't say as soon as possible, or if you can accelerate that.
So I think everybody's committed to try and move this train down the track as fast as we can, but.
No, I understand, but I think. Right, so our attorney is asking, so then, Tricia, do you want a date certain? Or do you want a range? Because I think the range thing really makes us vulnerable. I just, there are so many things that needed, that, that were set in stone that we didn't follow. And anyway, I'm not sure what you need in terms of definitive dates or whatever, but I am not comfortable with a range, because it gives, it really gives too much leeway for other things to happen. But anyway, I don't know. I mean, is there any more public comment on this? I, I don't even know, but, Bill.
I would assume, are there, are there public comment, hands raised?
David Westendorf.
Okay, let's break for a public comment again.
Pelagic Group is absolutely fine with 60 days, and I would just ask the board's direction to make sure that Jim knows that you have his full support in driving the hastiness and the speed of this negotiation. We'll do on, everything on our side to fulfill our obligations for that 60 days.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Commissioner Matush.
I'd like to move to approve and authorize the general manager to execute an amendment to the lease and to consent to the lease assignment with the amendments that we have noted. And I would also go with the 90 days, just because we don't want to have a back and forth of six special meetings trying to finalize this lease. Need a little bit of time and breathing room.
Hey, and a second, just to be super clear, can we specify as closely as possible what those additional conditions are? Trish, do.
Do you want it, Jim?
I can try, and then you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
The, Tom made a movement to approve the motion with amendments to include that the lease will be renegotiated within 90 days of the date of the assignment. So that'll give us a date certain, that General Counsel will provide an indemnification clause in the lease amendment prior to assignment, and that there will also be a clause in there that the parties will file no further, any lawsuits against us with relation to the leases.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, can we have a real call, please?
Commissioner Matush?
Aye.
Commissioner Domrot?
Aye.
Mr. Slater Carter?
No, I want to see the amended documents before I vote on them. So I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Chang Corrali?
I just lost y'all. Hold on. I mean, I kind of, I agree with Commissioner Slater-Carter, but I, I mean, I think voting yes is the best thing that we can do right now at this point. But I do want to see the amended documents on this. We're basically, we are voting just for the assignment with these terms. This doesn't really have anything to do with the leases, per se. But given the, the lack of appropriate communication between the general manager and the board, I think that, I mean, I can see why Commissioner Slater-Carter has some trepidation about this. And so I agree with her on the way, I think that we need to move forward on it.
But that was a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Zemke, I just want to confirm that the motion did include an amendment to the lease. So it is a consent, and it is amendment to the leases with the 180 days, with the 90 days, I'm sorry, and the additional changes.
Ninety.
Yeah, no, that, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. But, so you're approving two things. You, the motion was to approve the consent, and the motion was to approve the amendments to leases.
Are we all clear on that?
No, no, we're not. I'm clear on it, but I'm not sure everyone's clear on it, and this has gotten us into trouble before. So are you saying, Tricia, that Tom has made a motion for just the, the assignment within 90, what, what, I'm not understanding, if we're confused, or if you're confused, or both of us are confused?
On the agenda, the motion is to approve an amendment to each of the leases and to approve the consent. That consent is conditioned upon that amendment having been executed, among other things. So the board is approving an amendment to each lease, and it's also approving consent for each.
And it's also what?
Approving the consent to assign each lease.
The consent document, because the consent.
No, I understand, but that's not, but Tricia brought up, so there's really one motion for the three, is what you're saying, for the 90 days. Is that correct?
There is a motion for all three of the leases that involves an amendment.
No, the assignment of all three of the leases, not the three leases, the assignment of them.
Correct. That's right. And it's a.
He didn't say that just a minute ago, so you've just added assignment.
Oh, no, it isn't, I'm sorry. It is not, it's a consent to the, let me be very clear. And then we'll look at the agenda. The emotion is for each of the leases, for the city, the, I'm sorry, the Harbor Board Commission, to approve an, an amendment to the, the lease.
No, the, okay.
An amendment to the lease with the current tenant, and then a consent to the lease assignment.
So basically, it's two things, the assignment and the consent to the assignment, that's one. And then when we negotiate, well, and when the, the lease negotiation is happening, that has to be within 90 days. But it's all, it sounds like it's been encompassed in one motion. Should we do it in two?
I just want to make sure that it's clear what your motion was. There was one motion.
Not my motion, it was Tom Matush, it was Commissioner Matush's motion.
So there's one motion that applies to all three leases, and that motion is to approve an amendment to each of the leases. That amendment, among other things, provides that each of the leases terminates within 90 days. And so that's an amendment to the lease with the current, with the current tenants. And then also, the motion approved a consent to the assignment. The board is not approving the actual assignment. The board is simply consenting to the assignment. The assignment is a contractual agreement between the current tenant and the new tenant.
Okay, so I get that. So are you saying Commissioner Matush's one motion is sufficient for these two things? Because that's not what it sounds like to me from you. I mean, it just would be clearer for there were two motions. But I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but what's gotten us stuck in this decades-old horrible leases, not the most recent one withstanding, when Catch, the Catch Do In lease was renegotiated, has been the lack of clarity for these leases. So Tom made one motion, but it sounds like we should make two. We should make one for the consent, and then one for that unless, well, I mean, I can see where it would be encompassed in one. Is that, I just don't want, I don't want there to be any ambiguity to staff as to the direction, because I am not going to deal with that again.
I view that the motion was to accept staff's recommendation as listed on the agenda, but to add the additional provisions as directed by the board. The first being that we have some really tight language, as requested by Commissioner Slater-Carter, that is essentially like a settlement agreement. There are no more lawsuits after this. There's, right? Yeah, we add that. And that also there, that we are changing what's in the documents that were in your packet, so that the leases are only, they're, they terminate within 90 days rather than 180 days.
So then with regard to Commissioner Slater-Carter's concern about not being able to see these documents before we're approved.
these documents before we're approved, if we were approved these, I mean, let me ask you this. Jim, when can these types, when can this update be done? Could it be updated by next week's board meeting? Is one week really going to make a difference? I mean, it'll make a difference in terms of, you know, carrying out the direction of the board, but maybe not in terms of, you know, the actual consent to assignment. And that way, it would satisfy Commissioner Slater Carter, Commissioner Slater Carter's desire to read the amended language.
To read the finished documents, not, not the in-process documents.
That's correct. I mean, you know, I know that we're in the minority right now. If I were to change my vote to no, but given how I think that we've had mistakes made before for 30-plus years, I think it's really important for us to really see what is actually finally written. Basically, we're being asked to vote for something that hasn't even been finalized. That's what it sounds like to me. And if we can finalize this in a week, what difference does one week make? Our board meeting next week is on Wednesday, so a week from today. I mean, I hate to, to do this, Tom, but I mean, I, I just, I just feel like.
On the one hand, you're saying you want things to happen in a hurry, and on the other hand.
Yeah, but one week isn't going to make a difference. It's 90 days. Well, what's the difference is, is that I want to make sure that staff is actually following the board's direction. That's what I want to ensure happens, right? Because I don't believe that it's happened before with regard to this situation. And I, I agree, I agree to the 90 days.
This turned into kind of a confusing, I think we're discussing it right in the middle after we started taking the.
Well, I'm actually going to change my vote to no.
Would it be appropriate to go back and retake the vote, if this was clarification? And I'm wondering, maybe the other thing is, if it would take the general manager and the attorney 15 minutes to actually draft the language that they would choose, and take a recess for 15 minutes, and then come back with the specific language and vote on the specific. Maybe that would address Virginia's concern that.
Well, also, Commissioner Slater Carter.
Certainly not address mine, because I, I'm sorry, I don't sign blank checks.
No, I understand that. But is that reasonable, 15, 30 minutes? Could you?
I don't know. Can that be done?
Yes. So let me start by saying, the only reason I wanted to clarify is because Commissioner Jane Corrali said something that made me think that the motion, that what she was voting on was not the motion that was made. So I wanted to clarify what the motion was. I think that the changes you are suggesting are things, now, I understand your policy direction to want to push it out, and that's fine, but I wanted to let you know, from my perspective, I could make these changes fairly quickly. I would not want to, I would not want to draft that bulletproof settlement language on the fly before you approve it. That's something I'd really like an opportunity to go back, you know, look at some settlement documents, and make sure it's really thoughtful, bulletproof language. I don't, I don't think it's something that I could go in the other room and quickly put into an agreement. But I do think it's something I could turn around in a few days. It's not, it's not something I would do in 15 minutes.
It feels with amendments to the lease, not with the consent agreement. So if we separate it and just have the lease separate, and the consent agreement separate, maybe we vote on the consent agreement, let that go, and then take a couple of days for the language for the lease changes. And that way.
The consent is based on the lease.
That's the thing, that the consent is based on the, these amendments.
I don't want to, I guess my, my concern is I don't want to throw off Pelagic's schedule any more than we already have. And I'm really reluctant to go and say we'll put this off for another week.
Okay.
End this whole thing.
Well, I know, but it.
I'm actually less concerned about Pelagic's schedule than I am about making sure that the Harbor District gets clarity on this lease and these agreements and amendments, because we've had too much, we've had too many problems with the lack of clarity. I don't think one week is going to make a big difference. I mean, our regular meeting is next week anyway. What's the difference? 90 days? It's going to be 90 days anyway. In one week, to get clarification, I think is the best thing for the public, so everyone knows exactly what the board is voting on.
I'm not sure that's it. I think that it's, Pelagic may have concerns about doing things on their schedule until they actually have the assignment. So we're basically putting the assignment off another week, which may delay what Pelagic needs to do. That's.
Again, I'm less concerned about what Pelagic needs than I am about what the Harbor District needs, and what the public needs. The public needs clarity. We don't want to be in a situation like this again, where we had, and I don't think we will be, where we have the tenants not doing what they are supposed to do, which is what, you know, for the last six months, this is kind of what's happened. And I agree with the member, with what Sid, who's the member of the public, he said, yeah, everyone wants this to be opened, and to, I think for the board to have reassurance, and the public to have reassurance, exactly what the terms are, is what is our responsibility.
I guess kind of my feeling is, you know, I think we've defined as best we can the direction for our staff. And what we're missing is just maybe the exact words, which staff wants to be sure that they get them correct. But to me, the, the direction we've provided is clear, it's concise, there's not a lot of ambiguity to it potentially. And maybe, maybe the best thing to do is go back and take the vote, just to make sure everybody's on board, or that everybody's clear on what we're voting on. Does that make sense? Do you think we need to go back and, since we started our discussion in the middle of the vote?
If, if, if the chair would like, I could reread what I believe the motion is, and then everybody can vote, making clear that they, that was what they were voting on when they.
To make sure it's clear. If you could do that, please.
As I view the motion, it's to accept the staff's recommendation to approve the amendment to lease and consent to lease assignment, with changes as suggested by the board, the first being that there is some provision in the amendment, the lease amendment, that specifies that the parties will not have any lawsuits, they will not, they waive any and all further claims. And the other change being that the leases will terminate within 90 days rather than 180 days.
There's also the indemnification.
That's what I, I was kind of putting that on.
Indemnification, those two together.
That's part of the problem, is when you put everything together, there's misunderstanding. And that's why all the leases and legal documents I've been reading recently have long paragraphs, making very sure that everybody is specifically, and every action is specifically, and it's all contemplated, instead of just saying, oh, no, that all goes together. Assumptions don't work in court anymore. And I can approve of this in concept, but I absolutely cannot approve something without seeing the final language.
Well, plus, there's been a pattern of giving the commissioners documents at the last minute, and that's unacceptable. And so that, I mean, so I, I just think that if we don't know what we're finally going to be approving, the public doesn't know what it's finally going to be on the hook for. That really doesn't do us, that does a disservice to the board and to the public that we represent.
I want to add that Trish has done a remarkable job, considering the first document that we got, which was why I am so nervous, to be real honest, about what is, is going to be the final document here, because it, it was incomplete, it was confusing, it was jumbled. Trish has made amazing progress. I want to see it through to the end.
Any further comments? Okay, let's take a roll call.
What exactly is the motion again?
Well, it was, as Tricia had read, with, with three points rather than two, the indemnification, safety, the agreement not to sue, and the 90 days. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Matush.
Aye.
Commissioner Domrot.
Aye.
We have a public comment. Is anyone checking public comment? There's a hand raised.
I'm going to wait and hear the public comment.
Okay, let's backtrack, Jesus Christ.
This is, someone's got to keep track of the public comment. I don't know why, I mean, I'm looking at this on a, on a phone right now, so why?
Screen in front of me.
Right, but Melanie, that's what she should be doing.
Comment's not necessary, because you already took a public comment on your item. And it's at the chair's discretion.
I would prefer to take the public comment. Can we, can we do that? Who's?
Sid Young.
Sid.
Hello. I just wanted to say that I even thought the attorney said she would rather go back and wordsmith this a little better herself, and not do it in rush, rush, hurry up. And you do have a meeting next week, so if you can't get it done today, it makes sense to me to do it right. And maybe if you have to break it into two or three different documents to approve, so you get the right wordsmithing, that seems more prudent to me. But, you know, I'm just the public. I still want to go down and eat at the harbor, so I'd like it to be sooner than later, but I don't want to see it messed up either. Thanks, bye.
Third comment. Any further public comments?
No public comment.
Let's try this the third time. Third time's a charm.
All right.
Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Commissioner Domrot.
Aye.
Mr. Slater Carter.
We'll wait until next week. Until then, no.
Mr. Jane Corrali.
I'm afraid I'm going to be with Commissioner Slater Carter, given the pattern of staff not being as direct with us and taking direction from us. So, I mean, I agree that we need to move forward with it, but I really want the language to be very, very clear. But I know the motion's going to pass. I just think that we're not doing the best, providing the best representation to the public.
Mr. Zamke.
Yes. Okay, that concludes our discussion items. Any other items to discuss? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zamke.
Aye.
Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Commissioner Domrot.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Great. Thanks, Bill.